Second, 2019, at 7:00 PM. Marla, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Hare.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Ben Sausetta.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schroeder. Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. Tonight, Councilmember George Glover is going to lead in the invocation and Councilmember Melvin Kerr is going to lead in the pledge. If everybody please stand.
Let's pray. Father God, we pray for unity tonight with members of the council. We also pray for wisdom, guidance, and discernment in doing the will of the people of Park City. We also pray for provision for any needs that need to be met for the citizens of Park City. We also pray that people will seek you and all they say into you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Brandy?
I make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
And Ben?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. We don't have anything for awards or presentations this evening, and nobody signed up to speak at public forum, so we'll move on to the staff reports. Sean?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of things to update you on as far as projects or developments. First is 61st Street Bridge. As council was briefed at the last meeting, the beams were set nearly two weeks ago on the south side of the bridge, and they are on pace to complete that side of the bridge by January, which then they'll transition to the north side of the bridge. As far as the hydraulic street bridge just north of 69th Street, construction is ongoing. Even with the weather that they've had to date, they've been able to overcome any delays, and they are still planning on being complete by February at the latest. A lot of that will depend on what the weather is in for January, but they're expected to be done in February at the latest. As far as the 61st Street West of Chisholm Creek Bridge, the first draft of the intersection control analysis that council approved is complete, and staff is meeting with the engineering company, WSP, on this Thursday to discuss the path forward. And as a heads-up, council should expect to have both the data that they've accumulated as well as the associated recommendations presented to them at one of our November council meetings. On construction side of the house camper land, construction is roughly 85% complete, and if you haven't been by there lately, there's already approximately about 200 RVs and campers on spot. The public infrastructure improvements of water, sewer, and pavement have all been installed. The latest thing that they've been waiting on is Evergy, and was waiting on the road to be complete before installing the electric to the facility. As a side note, staff recently met last week with the property owners just to the south of camper land, and they are both, property owners are already planning and designing the connection of Hartman Arena Drive to go from Hartman Arena Drive up to the north all the way to 85th. Council should expect a petition coming before them also in November time period. Talking with Belinda this morning, this afternoon, Atwoods, the exterior walls of the building are complete. Roofers are on site right now. They expect the building to be dried in within the next couple of weeks, so construction is proceeding as planned with a springtime opening expected. We have two more projects. 69th Street Warehouse, steel framing is up in place, and it too is expected to have completion in early to mid-spring. And then finally, the sleep-in, which is going next to Red Roof Inn and Taco Bell. They were true to their words. They broke ground by October 1st, and so they're in the process right now of preparing the pad site. As far as calendar reminders, this Saturday is Fall Fest. It's at Hat McLean Park from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. There will be hay rack rides, costume contests, face painting, clowns, bounce houses, and other activities, as well as refreshments for everyone. That's from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. So, that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Sean? Not seeing any. Thank you, Sean. That brings us to our consent agenda. Is there a motion? George?
Yeah, I'll move that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Melvin?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes 7-0. That brings us to item four under new business, which is discuss and consider an agreement with the land bank and ordinance to respread special assessments on the land bank properties. Doug?
Mayor and council, this is a follow-up to an item that was on the land bank agenda at last meeting, when the land, when the council sitting as the Park City Land Bank approved an agreement between the land bank and the city to respread certain drainage and stormwater specials that are against the land owned by the land bank in high ridge second addition. This is a two-part agenda item. The first part would be for the council to approve that respread agreement between the land bank and the city. And then, secondly, if the council approves that agreement, the way the council affects that respread is by ordinance, and you should have in your packet a pretty simple ordinance but with a huge attachment, which shows all those properties being equalized with assessments for that stormwater and drainage special assessment at approximately $4,140 going forward. There's no net change in the city's financial situation based upon this. It's just a re-respread and a evening out and equaling out of the total amount of assessments against the properties. The total assessment for the stormwater drain and stormwater drain assessments is going to still be the same figure. It's just going to come differently from the 100-plus properties that the land bank owns.
Okay. Thank you, Doug. Does anyone have any questions on the first part, 4A? Okay. Ben?
I'd go ahead and move to approve an agreement with the land bank to respread special assessments on properties located in the high ridge second addition that are held in the land bank.
George?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0, and that brings us to item B. Is there a recommendation from the council? Ben?
I move to approve ordinance number 1080-2019, respending special assessments against properties in high ridge second addition to the city of Park City.
And Brandy?
Second.
Okay. George?
I got a question. The way that reads it, it spreads special assessments on properties located in the high ridge second addition, oh, excuse me, to the city of Park City. I'm not quite understanding that statement. Are they going to spread those assessments all through the city or just in the second addition?
That's a legal description. That's the way you write the legal description for an addition. That should read, "high ridge second addition to the city of Park City." It's an addition to the city of Park City.
Okay. I thought he... Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. Marla, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Hare.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sausetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schroeder.
And that ordinance passes 7-0. Thank you, Doug. That brings us to item five, which is discuss and allow public comment regarding the proposed acquisition or portions of Primrose Park in support of the Wichita North Junction project.
Yes, sir. In 2015, Kansas Department of Transportation completed a concept study for the Wichita North Junction where interstates 135, 235, K-254, and K-96 meet. The study identified the preferred Wichita North Junction project with the following phasing plan. Phase one, also known as a green phase, replaces aging pavement and structurally deficient bridges over the little Arkansas River on 235. Construction started earlier this year and is anticipated to take three years. Phase two, also known as a gold phase, improves safety and reduces congestion during the AM and PM peak hours at the intersection of the four highways. Currently, the project is under preliminary design with a bid letting scheduled for portions of the gold project in February of 2021. In the last phase, purple project completes all the remaining major infrastructure improvements and relocates the main lines from interstate 135, 254, and 235. It removes the left-on, left-off ramps and completes the interchange connection of all major roadways. This project too is under preliminary design with no anticipated date on bid letting or construction. Due to additional fundings being made available at this time, KDOT is attempting to acquire the right-of-way for all three phases of the project, including what is the eastern portion of Park City's Primrose Park. You can see it on the screens up there. With the property being designated currently as parkland, KDOT and the Federal Highway Administration are required to allow public comments for the proposed acquisition for 30 days. Upon review of those public comments, if any, KDOT and the Federal Highway Administration will either proceed with an additional 4F environmental study or will require a letter from the city concurring with a de minimis finding, allowing KDOT to complete the necessary National Environmental Policy Act process, and then followed by the process of appraisals, negotiation, and acquisition. From the chart up there, you can see there's a small green sliver of Primrose Park. It's approximately 30 feet deep, and the width of that property line is about 355 feet. That is the right-of-way that they are looking to secure for their most preferred layout as it stands right now. Citizens interested in providing public comments can contact Tom Heinz, who's the KDOT Public Affairs Officer, via email at tom.hine@kansas.gov or by phone, which is listed there as well, If council has any questions, we also have Don Snyder here, who is a Wichita area metro engineer, that can answer questions regarding the project.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? I know Melvin, Tom, kind of been part of these conversations, so just looking and kind of see if you guys have anything you want to add to that. Tom?
I was, we were having discussion about a larger piece of that property to square up because there's a break and drop down to the east there on right-of-way, and we're electing not to do that. We're just looking at what they wanted, they asked us for initially.
Exactly. The original conversation that came into play is staff had found a proposed concept that was done back nearly 15 years ago, to where the eastern portion of Primrose Park did have a concept that it could be used. And so we submitted that, wanting to be transparent and let them know that, yes, the city at one point in time had, at least somebody in the city had some visions and plans going forward for that, which impacted their de minimis response finding. Also, at the same time, it was staff's recommendation that if you're going to secure necessary right-of-way, it would be more advantageous for the city if they secured all the land east of their hedgerow. That way, we don't have to maintain it. Let them maintain it. If you look to the northern portion of that or the right portion of the slide up there, KDOT already owns that. KDOT, after further discussion, has made it known that they have no preference in securing extra right-of-way. And so, in the end, we gave it a good shot, but what they're interested in is just the necessary right-of-way in order to complete the preferred routing of the project. If there becomes problems with it, at some point in time, KDOT could even look at redesigning the project and just avoiding the whole entire area to begin with. So...
Okay.
And then, one other comment I wanted to make on that too, is that's not going to have road on it. It's just right-of-way to, would be to the west of where that new exit ramp onto 235 would be.
Yeah. The purple on the chart up there, that is the new proposed route, road, and so you still have about 30-foot buffer between that and then the 30-foot that they would be taking. So the city would still have the responsibility of owning portions of Primrose Park that is on the east side of the hedgerow that will need to continue to maintain.
Did you want to add anything?
I think I've pretty well covered it, so...
Okay. Anybody else have any discussion on it? Ben?
So on, it's just for understanding. We're, as far as discussion on public comment for this, this is just to see if there's any issues regarding, if anyone have any...
That is correct. The recommendation is for council to make it available for public comment, which would be a 30-day time period, and it would complete sometime towards the end of November, right around the first part of December.
The 30-day time period would begin whenever the city council posts their minutes online.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Melvin?
No, in that meeting there, we did discuss about the noise, and there was not going to be any additional noise really to speak of, and the drainage also that they was going to address if there was any, but didn't seem to be any problems with that, so...
Yes, sir.
Okay. Brandy?
I don't have any comments, but I just recommend allowing public comments on the proposed acquisition of portions of Primrose Park in support of the Wichita North Junction project.
Tom?
I'd second that.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. That brings us to item six, which is discuss and consider approving the purchase of an updated Laserfish software and equipment. Sean?
Yes, sir. Laserfish is a paperless document scanning and storage system that the city has owned for the past 15 years. Although our software license actually expired two years ago, our local vendor, Galaxy Business, has continued to maintain the equipment and the software on an as-needed basis. But recently, they informed our staff that the version of the software is now obsolete and no longer supported by the home company of Laserfish. Galaxy has provided a quote "to upgrade and renew the city's Laserfish system to the newest Avante version versus starting a complete new license." In addition to absorbing the previous two years' worth of licensing fees that would bring it all current and to date, the $4,515.50 upgrade renewal cost would, is actually $3,135 less than the cost would be to go out and secure a new license. The new Avante software system provides vast improvements over our previous version, and it's also now KCG, JIS, and Interpol compliant, so it's capable of supporting not only city administration staff but also police and code enforcement with their paperless scanning and storage needs. That being said, the current system that we have right now consists of eight fujitsu scanners, and although they have performed remarkably well for 15 years, they are limited in their capacity and capability and should be replaced. This is an unbudgeted item, so we are recommending a phased approach to replacing the ones because the fujitsu's that we have are still, they're in good use. We have one or two of them that have kind of needing to be replaced immediately, but the vast majority of them can be replaced in a phased time period. We are recommending that they be replaced with a more capable Epson DS 530 workforce scanner incrementally over the next two to three years with four new ones, three for the police and code enforcement, and then one for admin. The cost of the four printers or scanners would be $1,580. As an update for next year's budget going forward, an annual software renewal fee is $1,293, which happens to be about $9 more than the previous business license was. So it's not like we're getting a lot more capability and it's not costing us a tremendous amount more. As I mentioned, it is unbudgeted for FY 2020. There is approximately $174,000 in the capital equipment fund, and we would recommend securing this purchase out of that. So staff is recommending bringing our account to current and going forward with the new Avante system, as well as purchasing four Epson scanners for a total cost of $6,095.50.
Okay. Thank you, Sean. Does anybody have any questions? Ben?
I like the fact that our staff has made do with what they have for 15 years and made it worth its, worth its weight there or value. So, taking the time to invest in our city's abilities and capabilities, not just in, as you mentioned, city administration, but also on our police and code enforcement side definitely makes sense. So, I'd move to approve $6,095.50 to purchase updated Laserfish software and equipment from Galaxy Business Equipment Incorporated to be paid out of the capital equipment fund.
Melvin?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. That brings us to item seven, which is discuss and consider the approval of the 2020 organizational chart associated with job description and authorizing the posting of positions. Sean?
Yes, sir. Hopefully you all have a larger printed scale copy of this. It's 11 by 17 at your DAS location. As far as I've been able to determine, the most recent official organization chart that is, was in our 2017 budget book. As staff continues to identify and redefine the functions of their individual departments, various changes to the city's organization chart have been proposed, as well as updated in support of job descriptions. Some minor changes proposed include either just a change in a job title or change in an assigned department that somebody may work in to more accurately reflect the jobs and the locations of where they're being performed, while other proposed changes include either adding or eliminating a particular position or completely changing the job function. Some of the highlights that I'd like to bring up, specific changes, are within the police department. One, we would like to reinstate the captain's position. Two, we'd like to redesignate the operations lieutenant position to just simply lieutenant. And then C, we would like to eliminate the administrative lieutenant position. Under public works, we would like to create an assistant public works director position and eliminate the utility supervisor position. Due to the recent hiring of new senior accountant as well as the city clerk, the finance department is in the process of making modifications to both those job descriptions as well as the part-time utility cashier reception job. Those updates are not available, were not available at this time, but will be included on the November 12 consent agenda for council's approval. As far as budgeting, all of the proposed changes are in the 2020 budget except for the salary difference between a lieutenant and a captain's position, which is right at $4,000. Staff recommends approval of the organization chart and the associated job descriptions.
Okay. George?
The only thing I have is a question, and I will say, I was very happy to see our new city clerk promoted from within. That made me very happy. And my question is, as I look at this and see the postings, are there plans to hire from without side, or are these going to be promotions from within?
The recommend, it depends on the individual job or the individual department. I can say with great confidence, and chief will correct me if I'm wrong, I would imagine that the police department, most of the positions would be hired from within, as far as the changes that would require. The hope and the anticipation is by promotion of one individual from one position to another that it creates a trickle effect and actually results in four to five, if not more, promotions within the department, which I think would be a huge retention benefit for our department. So, as far as the public works department, the proposed change is there. I met with the public works staff this afternoon to kind of explain further what the vision was and made certain that they were all well aware that, yes, we will be looking at internal applicants for that job as well, but we would also be opening it up to external applicants at the same time.
Okay. Well, I strongly encourage promotion from within if you have qualified people.
Yes, sir.
I understand if you don't have someone qualified. I understand that.
Yes, sir.
But if you have qualified people and you hire from without, from without, then you, all you're doing is causing bad morale.
I concur, sir.
And that's my only question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Tom?
One of the areas that I was looking at on here, and I think it's one of our weaknesses, is building inspection. And I'm looking at the org chart where we would have a planning zoning director and then building official. Would that building director be an inspector type or...
Yes, sir.
So we would be potentially adding another inspector there then?
Right now, the building official is building official slash inspector. That is Mr. Walker's position.
Correct.
So...
I didn't know if he would be filling or somebody else would be filling the director's position. Would that person be capable of doing inspections too? Because I think we're kind of light with all the works going on in the city and doing actual hands-on inspections that need to be done.
Yes, sir. It would not be envisioned that the planning and zoning director, that's the position right now that we currently have a contract for Russ Ewi to fulfill. So I would not envision that that individual would be doing building inspections. I know that council has once before mentioned the fact that they thought we needed to look at additional building inspectors. Right now, the way it is proposed, this organization chart, I can almost say with 100% confidence is position neutral as far as what it was when I first showed up here six months ago. And that's what we're attempting to do, is stay within the same footprint, but better allocate to the positions that we needed.
Okay. And that's, that's one of the weaknesses identified a couple of months ago, I think. I said it looked like we needed another inspector, because this guy's trying to cover a lot of territory.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And this doesn't address that.
Can we just touch on that real quick?
Yes, sir.
If we want to add that position when we go to budget, we have to add that position.
I understand.
So, I just want to make aware that when we go to budget next year, that's the time to say, hey, we need to add this position.
It's something, as the building goes up, we need to make sure it's going up right, and we need to make sure somebody's are looking at it.
Yes, sir.
And if we don't have a body that can get there, then we miss stuff, so...
Yes, sir. And again, I hope you all understand that this is a baby step going towards the right direction. Earlier today, had a conversation with city engineer and a couple of other individuals about just inspections within the community as a whole. Right now, there are public and private infrastructure improvements that are made within the community that usually a contracting company or an engineering company provides inspection services. I'm not convinced, I'm not fully ready to explain more furthe, further at this time, but I'm not convinced that that's the best way. I think it could be better served if we had an individual on staff providing inspections of public infrastructure that we're going to maintain in the future. That's what I'm customarily used to, but again, it's just something, we're starting those conversations. I do want you to note that a couple of months ago, when it was raised about the building inspector, sat down with our current building inspector and kind of indicated what council's perception is that you may need some help. You need to let me know when you get to that point when enough is enough, and if you need me to secure you help, that's my job, is to get the resources, so... Yes, sir.
Okay. Brandy?
I have a question about the police captain job description.
Okay.
In here, it says that he directly supervises the police lieutenant, but on the org chart, it looks like the chief of police is over the lieutenant. So is the chief of police over lieutenant, or is the police captain over the lieutenant?
Chief, do you want to?
I think the chart does, is incorrect, but the captain would be over the lieutenant.
But the chart's incorrect.
The chart is not correct.
Okay. So then, so then on the police lieutenant job description, so if the chart isn't correct, so where it says, "under the supervision of the chief of police," should that be under the supervision of the police captain?
I'm sorry, which point is that on the central function?
Lieutenant job description?
Okay.
The very first line under the position summary?
That would be under the captain, you're correct.
Okay.
I apologize for that. These were revisions from previous.
No, that, I just wanted to clarify.
That didn't get, so I appreciate that.
Okay. Melvin?
I've got a question about the public works there. The assistant public works director is going to be over the supervisor of the streets and the, in the parks, right?
That is correct, sir.
So is there not going to be a supervisor for the water and sewer utilities, whatever you call that?
That is correct, sir. Right now, our public works director's experience, background, resume is strongest when it comes to water and sewer, as well as facilities maintenance. And so the idea behind doing this is understanding that we have a limited staff, limited resources, is kind of divide and conquer, rather than having one individual responsible for... is kind of divide and conquer, rather than having one individual responsible for, not responsible, accountable, because Eric, our public works director, will overall be responsible for the whole entire department, but as far as being accountable, let him be accountable for water and sewer, as well as facilities. And then the assistant, he or she would be responsible for streets and to work parks.
I just seen the, the public works director before you was over the streets and utility and all of it there, but now they're going to be, I guess, over two, plus he's going to be the main man on the sewer and water?
Yes, sir.
He's going to be supervisor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're adding another position, or some of a supervisor for the public or utilities, we're going to have an assistant public works director?
That is correct.
So is that, okay.
It's, it's similar if you look up the organization chart the way that I am functioning currently right now with the assistant city administrator. There are areas that I naturally gravitate to, I think that I have more expertise or background and experience in, and there are areas that Dana gravitates to and has more experience and background. She has a wonderful working relationship with the police department and our chief. So it kind of made sense, rather than creating a hierarchy to where everyone's trying to go through the assistant city administrator on their way up to me, I have faith and confidence in her ability, she can handle those particular departments. Yes, I'm overall responsible for the whole organization, but let, let's divide and conquer, so to speak. So she can handle the right side of the organization chart, I'll handle the left side. So we continued that downrange when it came to public works. Eric is overall responsible for the department, and they're well aware of that, but he can assign some of that accountability to the assistant public works director, who hopefully, as we interview, if approved, will, will pan out that they have that expertise. We want them to be familiar with all of public works, that's the best-case scenario. But also, at the same time, we want them to have specific expertise in streets, and if they have parks and recreation as well, that's, that's a benefit. Most public works departments do not have parks and recreation under them. That's usually its own separate department.
Aye.
We're a smaller staff, got to be a little bit more agile and light about, so, and that's what we're trying to get accomplished, sir.
Okay. Anybody else? George?
Well, I'd like to test, and I'll probably support it, you know. We, we hired Sean and the chief to make his decision, and neither one of them's given me any reason whatsoever to doubt their ability to lead, and they want this, so I'll support it. I have no reason to doubt their, their leadership.
Tom?
Just looking at the police lieutenant and the police captain, I'm just curious on the, your police sergeant, how many years of experience is required for that position? Yeah?
I would be off my head if I...
But, I would just...
I know we reduce the experience for both captains. It's kind of been the trend because of the fact that our staff overall has less experience. So I, I'd be kind of speculating if I, we may need to revise that in light of the changes that were made here.
Thank you.
Okay. Brandy?
I'd make a motion to recommend the approval of the fiscal year 2020 org chart and the associated job descriptions with the change of moving the police lieutenant under the captain.
And the associated wording will make that happen, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay. George, do you want to second?
Yeah, I'll second, but I'd like to say something. I, I believe in accountability, and you was talking about those, the miswording on the captain, under the chief and stuff. I will confess, I, I probably did that structure back many, many years ago, probably right after the year 2000, I was trying to structure the police department, and I'm the guilty party. If, if guilt lies, it lies with me, and, and I'll take responsibility for it. If it, if it was the old one, I, I'm guilty.
Thank you, George. Ben?
Yeah, I'm just, want to say thank you also just for bringing this out there. I look at the, the left side there, or my left side there of the organizational chart compared with the right side. And one of the things I think is good in, in forward thinking on this after our conversation is that this is going to allow, or has the potential to allow for new promotions or new advancements, really on this left side of the, of the org chart, similar to what we see under the chief of police, how we, they've been able to have several stepping stones. So I think that, that can be a good possibility, especially in the public works area.
Yes, sir.
Specifically moving forward. We have great public works employees, every single one of them. I love driving out every morning and I see them headed off to do their job, and I know they're doing a great job taking care of all those things. I think it's going to provide some great, some opportunities there. It's going to take some time to reorganize it. Rome wasn't built in a day, so don't expect it to finish up tomorrow or the beginning of 2020. So I'd be very supportive of this, and I want to say thank you all to you and, and to all of our employees that are working through this, looking ahead and, and trying to do what's best for our city in the long run. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. There's no further comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0, and that brings us to closing remarks, and we'll start with Brandy.
I don't have anything tonight.
The thing I would, I, I've got to say is, I was watching the news this morning, and I was interested, because I know a lot of people are really into Facebook, and they really get a lot of information off of it. But if, if I heard the news right, the head of Facebook said that they had uncovered a large group of Russians in, in Russia posing as Americans and already intervening in our election. And, you know, I, I got my, you know, I hate to see the hate and discontent start up on social media, and, you know, I just think, well, look at that with a grain of salt when you see some of that stuff.
Thanks, Eric. Tom?
I don't have anything to add.
Melvin?
I just want to say my thoughts and prayers go out to Ben Taylor's family. He passed away this, a couple of days ago there, and he's worked for the city, what, 10 years, I think it is? So, good man.
Ben?
I want to say thank you to everyone that came out. We had Tanya Buckingham, a register of deeds with us for convo's this month, and able to issue some of the military discount cards for those that came out, and want to remind those in our, in our area that are active or retired military, they can go to the register of deeds office and receive that. If they are also retired, the register of deeds is the place to go and have your DD214 filed, and they'll take care of that for you. So take advantage of that great service. It's an ever-expanding list of discounts for veterans, and it's an easy way, so you're not having to carry around everything, it's just an easy-to-carry card, so take advantage of that there. And then also, happy birthday to our public works director, Eric, today.
All right. George?
Yeah, happy birthday to Eric as well. This Saturday, 4:00 to 7:00, at McLean Park, that's going to be the place to be at Park City, so come out and enjoy the festivities. We have a lot going on, and all of it's free, and we welcome everyone. Thank you.
John?
Yes, I got a call this weekend, I think the city administrator did, too, but about, like panhandling and stuff like that on the ramps here at 61st Street, and I just wondered if that was something we need to maybe take a look at an ordinance on it, or before we ask the, the city attorney or the chief to spend time putting something together and beating it up, is it something that we would have an interest in to where we prohibited that?
Doug, I know we've talked about it in the past, can we just have something at the next council meeting for just discussion purposes only? What our current ordinance is, and just discussion around what maybe some other communities are doing?
Sure. I think we have a current ordinance that does restrict it.
But can we just put that in there for discussion and just kind of talk about what it currently does for us?
Sure.
Thanks. I'd make a motion, we adjourn.
And Ben?
Second.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes 7-0. Thank you. (applause)